Let me call to order this public meeting of the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York. Welcome to all of you. I would like to read the following announcement into the record. The meetings of the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York are open to the public, and the Board welcomes the interest of those who attend. The public has ample opportunity to communicate with the Board. Public hearings on the Board’s policy calendar are scheduled one week prior to the Board’s regular meetings, and members of the public who wish to communicate with the Board are invited to express their views at such public hearings. Furthermore, the Board holds additional public hearings each year in all of the five boroughs, at which members of the public may also speak. In addition, written communications to the Board are distributed to all trustees. The Board must carry out the functions assigned to it by law, and therefore cannot tolerate conduct by members of the public that disrupts its meetings. In the event of disruptions, including noise, which interferes with Board discussion, after appropriate warning, I will ask the security staff to remove persons engaging in disruptive conduct. The university may seek disciplinary and/or criminal sanctions against persons who engage in conduct that violates the university’s rules or state laws, which prohibit interference with the work of public bodies. May I now request that everyone take a moment to mute your cellphone or BlackBerry? Thank you. CUNY TV is transmitting the public sessions of this afternoon’s meeting of the Board live on cable channel 75. CUNY TV is transmitting the public sessions of this afternoon’s— the meeting is also being webcast live at www.cuny.edu/livestream, providing services worldwide via personal computers and mobile devices. The public session of this Board meeting will be available as a podcast within 24 hours and can also be accessed via the CUNY website. I want to congratulate Trustee Wellington Chin for being honored by the New York Chinatown Lions Club at their 60th Annual Charter Night Celebration Chinese Lunar New Year Banquet on Friday, February 21st. Congratulations also to Trustee Valerie Beal, who will be honored this Friday, February 28th, along with prominent business executives at the Pinnacle Awards and Scholarships Luncheon coordinated by Medgar Evers College. I want to thank the trustees, presidents, members of the Chancellery, students, and faculty, who attended the New York State Black Puerto Rican Hispanic and Asian Legislative Caucus during the weekend of February 14 through 16. Our Board was represented by Vice Chair Phil Berry, who presented a CUNY Educational Leadership Award to New York State Commissioner of Labor Peter Rivera at the CUNY luncheon, and Trustee Frida Foster, who presented the first Terrence Tolbert internship to Crystal Joseph, a Master’s Candidate in Urban Affairs at the CUNY School of Professional Studies, Joseph S. Murphy Institute at the luncheon. They were joined by trustees Rita Di Martino and Ugo Morales. Vice Chair, would you like to say a few words about the caucus?
Yeah, just a very few words. I think that one of the things that’s good about the caucus and our participation is that it’s more than just a luncheon event. It’s really an intervention that we make to continue to demonstrate CUNY’s presence throughout the state, and also especially with a number of new individuals, legislators, and also commissioners who are in place. We were very well represented, and it’s really good for them to see the intervention and the participation of all units, students and presidents there. So it was really a good event from that standpoint.
Thank you, and thank you very much for being part of it.
There was also—I think we also had the Chair of our Student Senate who was there, Mohamed Ashwad—you were there also? He was also—
Good, yes. Thanks—thank you to all of you. I want to thank Trustee Peter Pantaleo, who has agreed to serve as Chair of the Graduate Center Presidential Search Committee, and thank you as well to trustees Rita Di Martino, Joe Loda, Brian Oberfeld, and Charles Shorter for agreeing to serve as members of this important committee. The other members are being appointed consistent with our guidelines. I charged the Graduate Center Presidential Search Committee earlier this afternoon, along with our interim chancellor. I should say that Bill Kelly has decided, rather than returning to the Graduate Center—he’s, after 15 years there as provost and president—he has decided to take a well-earned study leave to work on a—to finish a book that he’s been working on for some time, and to return to the Graduate Center of Faculty. We will later on in the semester have our opportunity to express our deepest appreciation for Bill’s great service, not only as interim chancellor, but as president and provost of the Graduate Center. On behalf of the Board—and we’ve consulted each member of the Board on this question and have the Board’s unanimous approval—I have indicated that the search committee may consider the interim president of the Graduate Center among any candidates that it reviews. There could be other internal candidates from CUNY as well. There are no favorites in this. The search is open and objective, but the interim president can be among the candidates that the committee considers if it wishes. Interim Chancellor Kelly and chancellor-designate James Milliken will be participating in the work of the committee and will be heavily involved with the committee in working through candidates. We have also asked Professor Jonathan Cole of Columbia, my old friend, who was provost at Columbia for 14 years, to serve as a consultant to the committee. He served as a consultant to the committee the last time—the committee—the last time there was a search for the presidency of the Graduate Center. I’d like now to call on Trustee Valerie Beal to announce college and faculty honors.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commons in a Box for CBOX, a CUNY and Graduate Center project, currently won—recently won—the Digital Humanities Award for Best Digital Humanities Tool. Cbox is a free software that powers the CUNY Academic Commons into a free, easy-to-install package. Congratulations. Director of Baruch’s Computer Center for Visually Impaired People, Karen Gorgi, was featured as a New Yorker of the Week by New York One for her advocacy of visually impaired people. Congratulations. Hunter College, Rudin Professor of Nursing and co-director of the Center for Health, Media, and Policy, was elected President of the American Academy of Nursing. Ann William Randolph Hearst, Professor of Clinical Nursing, won the 2014 Oncology Nursing Society Lifetime Achievement Award. Congratulations. Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. May I now call on Trustee Carol Robles-Roman to announce student and alumni honors?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Five CUNY students are recipients of the Benjamin Gilman International Scholarship, which provides funds for study abroad to students with financial need who do not traditionally participate in study abroad programs. The students are Ting Ting Chan, Hunter College; Zaleka Johnson, CUNY BABS Program, Medgar Evers College; Peter Lee, Hunter College; Rui Yan Ma, Queens College; and Sebastian Restrepo, CUNY BABS Program, Baruch College. Audrey Steenon, McCauley Honors College at Hunter College, has won a LEU scholarship for study in Asia. Crystal Ye and Erica Larson of Hunter College are recipients of the Public Policy and International Affairs Fellowship for undergraduates. Congratulations to them all. College of Staten Island student Anthony Shaligan won the 2014 American Railway Engineering and Maintenance of Way Association Scholarship, which is awarded to engineering students specializing in the railway industry. Congratulations. Baruch College MBA student Elizabeth Alpern was named to Forbes 30 Under 30 in the food category for the Gafiltateria, a food business she opened in 2012. Congratulations. I’m reading it how it’s spelled. I think we’ve got to check that place out. New Yorkers for Children awarded LaGuardia Community College 2013 Nursing Alumni Crystal Cameron its Spirit Award, an annual $10,000 scholarship that goes to a young person in foster care who has overcome significant barriers to academic success. She is now working towards a bachelor’s degree in nursing from Hunter College. Congratulations. Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. A list of grants and gifts received by the university since our January 27, 2004, meeting. I’d like now to call on Chancellor Kelly to present his report on recent activities.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to begin my report this afternoon by offering an update on the performance management process. As I think all of you know, the PMP has served the university very well as an accountability framework since 2000, when it was introduced. It links planning and goal-setting by the university and its colleges and measures annual progress toward the achievement of those goals. Each spring, the chancellor sets the university’s performance targets, CUNY presidents working with their executive teams and college communities, then map performance goals and targets in alignment with those of the university. This year, we embarked on streamlining the PMP in an effort to make the process more efficient and meaningful. Last Friday, I issued the new PMP framework, which will be implemented in the 2014-15 academic year, comprises eight university goals, several sector-specific goals, and a small selection of additional college-focus area goals that presidents and deans will identify in consultation with their college constituencies. This new framework reflects a collective desire to eliminate redundancy, reduce sometimes burdensome demands, and foster greater focus on university and college priorities. And I’d like to thank the college presidents, members of the Chancellery, and in particular, university PMP Director Cheryl Littman for their feedback and their work on this effort. Also pleased to provide a brief update on our cross-campus initiative, which I had introduced to the Board a couple of meetings ago. Some significant progress through the Community College Research Fellowship Program. The university will award release time of two courses each to faculty members who have applied and have promising records of scholarly achievement. Award recipients will meet during the semester collectively to discuss their research projects. The intent is twofold: to support community college presidents in their efforts to encourage faculty research, and second, to encourage collaboration across colleges. This is consistent, of course, with the intentions of the integrated university and consistent with our belief that the whole is greater than the sum of the parts. Spring will also launch a faculty leadership academy as part of the cross-campus initiative to offer faculty members who are interested in academic administration a series of five seminars on the nuts and bolts of higher education administrations at public universities. I may sit in for that myself. The seminars will feature selected senior administrators and managers from the CUNY Central Office and the CUNY colleges on topics of importance in higher education management. Presidents and deans, the university faculty senate, PSC, have been asked to invite—to nominate faculty to participate in the academy. The Artists in Residence Program taking shape as well. There have been meetings with chairs of art, music, dance, and drama departments from various colleges, and there appears to be broad agreement for the parameters of the program, which should be in place by the fall. In that regard, I’m pleased to note that Queens College received a two-year, $100,000-per-year grant from the New York Community Trust to support the CUNY Dance Initiative, which will allow New York City-based dance companies to do residencies at CUNY campuses throughout the city. Again, this is the part of sharing resources to produce greater good for the participating colleges. I want to thank particularly Professor David Nassau for coordinating these and other prongs of this initiative. Student side, I’m pleased to report that this year we received a record number of applications for the McCauley Honors College, more than 5,700. We say this every year, record set upon record, a tribute to the extraordinary good work that Dean Kirshner and her colleagues have done, and again, a source of great pride and success for the university. University-wide, thus far, we’ve admitted about 20% more freshman and transfer students compared to the same time last year, but I hasten to add, it would appear that the great growth primarily has to do with an earlier acceptance of applicants than last year. If we were up 20%, at the end of the day, we’re all in serious trouble. We have to be talking about renting various kinds of trailers. We also have some promising news on the student award front. Mr. Chair, CUNY has 10 finalists for the Jack Kent Cooke Foundation Scholarship—that’s $30K each year for two years, 13 Goldwater Scholarships, 27 Fulbrights, recommended host countries, a variety of other awards. I want to take the opportunity to congratulate college presidents and their staff, to salute Vice Chancellor Hirschenson and his for pressing this initiative, and most important, to salute the high-achieving students who have done so well at our great university. With respect to legislative matters, a very active period in city-state and, to some extent, federal, and the state budget, on Thursday, February 6th, I testified at a joint hearing of the New York State Senate Finance and Assembly Ways and Means Committee, focusing on the state executive budget. Copies of my testimony are, I think, in your packet, certainly on the table, along with our gold sheet, which I urge upon you, provides a comprehensive list of CUNY’s operating and budget priorities. In my testimony, I focused on the importance of budget stability that we’ve enjoyed at this university, as well as at SUNY. I’ve talked as well about our ongoing needs, particularly community college base aid and the mandatory costs, particularly step raises and operating costs for such facilities as the ASRC, and I spoke as well about our capital needs in general, with particular attention to critical maintenance projects. Efforts to promote these efforts—to these interests are ongoing. Our email campaign to facilitate communication between members of our community and state government has thus far resulted in 216,000 emails, I am told. Seems like my basic week. Legislative meetings in each borough have taken place or are scheduled, and I want to thank the presidents who have coordinated those efforts. I also want to thank them for coordinating further efforts to bring students, faculty, and others to Albany and to district offices. On February 16th, Governor Cuomo announced a new statewide initiative to give incarcerated individuals the opportunity to earn a college degree through funding college classes in prisons across New York State. Studies, many of them conducted at this university, have shown that investing in college education for prisoners dramatically decreased recidivism rates while lowering incarceration costs. Those who earn a college degree while in prison are less likely to end up behind bars again. At CUNY, we have been longtime supporters of this idea, and note particularly the good work that’s been done at John Jay, at the Graduate Center, and a number of other colleges. At Jay, the prison-to-college pipeline has generated a great deal of public and private interest and support. We’re emboldened by the governor’s initiative. We recognize this is a very heavy lift, and we are prepared to put our shoulder to that wheel, and I want to salute President Travis’s efforts in that regard. On the city side, Mayor de Blasio delivered his State of the City address at LaGuardia Community College on February 10th. I want to take a moment to offer my thanks and my congratulations to President Mello and her staff. It was a wonderful day. It was terrific to be there. Lots of planning, lots of execution, and it went just perfectly. The mayor announced a comprehensive jobs program, one which will no doubt call upon our resources to enact. He also pledged to expand investment in STEM efforts and healthcare training. We look forward to supporting those initiatives and to working with the mayor to achieve our common goals. He issued his preliminary budget on February 12th, which I’m sure you’ve read about. CUNY’s revenue appropriation for community colleges was increased by $24.2 million to accommodate the $300 tuition annual increase. There will be a joint hearing of the City Council Higher Education and Finance Committee on March 7th. We will, of course, be testifying and speaking of our budget priorities on the city side at that time. Federally, just briefly, I remind you of our ongoing efforts to support the president’s request for a rating system. As you recall when we spoke last time, based on the modeling that we have done, CUNY’s 11 four-year college rank in the top 36 of 500 of all 555 public four-year institutions based on the criteria of affordability, access, and outcome. All of our two-year colleges rank in the top one-half nationally, and I want to thank Ricardo Fernandez and the members of the Council of Presidents Ad hoc Committee for their guidance in this project, and David Crook and his staff for modeling and for creating documents that we can share with the Department of Education, which we are currently doing. Finally, Mr. Chairman, I’m pleased to announce that the second installment of the chancellor’s conversation with CUNY faculty series takes place next week. The inaugural conversation featured two resident economics experts on the topic of income inequality. The second event, which is scheduled for March 4th, at the Graduate Center, is entitled Art and Craft Teaching Writing, and it will feature Colm McCann from Hunter College and Andre Assamon from the Graduate Center in conversation with me. That, sir, concludes my report.
Any questions or comments from the—yes?
There were a number of very positive things in that report, but one thing I have to comment on was the Community College Research Initiative, a hugely positive signal to many very, very hard-working men and women who, in addition to teaching a very serious—having a very serious teaching load, take the time, make the extra effort to publish books, publish articles, and this is a signal to them from the chancellor and the Board that their research is important to us, and we will find a way to support it. So I thank you for them very much.
Thank you, Terry. That’s certainly its intent.
Other comments or questions for the chancellor? I would just like to say that I think the performance review system that Matt and I inaugurated back in 2000, there was nothing like it before. It was our goal that CUNY should have the most constructive accountability framework of any university. I know of no university that has anything approaching our performance review structure, and I want to just thank all the presidents and the deans and everyone in the chancellery who really have put that together and then improved it over the years. It’s remarkable—it’s a remarkably successful piece of work, and I thank everyone, all the presidents and deans, as well as the people in the chancellery, for having it in place, and I think it has had a clear impact on faculty recruitment, on student success, on raising student standards, graduation rates, and the rest of the things that are critically important for us to focus on. So I thank you for continuing to improve that. We’ll now take up policy items that require our vote. You have at the table a copy of the chancellor’s university report for February 24, 2014. I will move the adoption of that report. May I have a second?
Second.
Are there any questions for the chancellor on the university report? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
What’s that? There is one table item? Thank you. That’s part of my motion, part of the second as well. Any questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions? That passes. I’d like to also move the approval of the minutes of the regular Board meeting and executive session of January 27, 2004. You have a copy of the draft minutes in your meeting books. May I have a second?
Second.
Are there any revisions or suggestions for changing those minutes? If not, all in favor of their adoption, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions? The minutes are adopted. We’ll now turn to reports from various committees. We’ll hear first from the Committee on Fiscal Affairs. May I call on trustee Joe Loda?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Committee on Fiscal Affairs, the Subcommittee on Audit, and the Subcommittee on Investments met in joint session on February 3, 2014. After approval of the minutes of the January 6 meeting, the committee approved the following resolution. Calendar Item 3A is a resolution requesting that the trustees adopt a revised schedule of tuition and fee charges for students enrolled in the online degree and certificate programs offered by John Jay College effective fall of 2014, in order to charge all students the graduate in-state tuition rates regardless of residency, and to charge a $75 online infrastructure fee each term in lieu of the student activities fee. On April 27, 2009, the trustees adopted a revised schedule of tuition and fees so that students enrolling in John Jay College’s first online program, the Master of Public Administration Inspector General, pay the prevailing in-state tuition for graduate students. Since then, the college has received approval from both this Board and the state of New York for a new online Masters of Science and Security Management program that will be offered to students starting in 2014. Therefore, it is critical to follow this precedent and charge the in-state tuition rate for the online Master of Science and Security Management program and for all future online graduate degree and advanced certificate programs. The new online infrastructure fee will provide online students with key student services that are critical to ensure a high retention rate in these programs. Mr. Chairman, I move the approval and the adoption of calendar item 3A.
I’ll second that item. Are there questions for the committee on item 3A? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions? 3A is adopted.
Following the approval of action item A, the Subcommittee on Audit was convened, and after the approval of the minutes of their meeting of December 4th, Shelley Massey and John Usiano of KPMG gave us a report on the A1-33 audit. I’m happy to report that the report was clean and that there were no major findings. After adjourning the audit Subcommittee, the Subcommittee on Investments was convened, and following the approval of the minutes of the November 4 meeting, the Subcommittee was adjourned to go into executive session. In the executive session, Cambridge Associates provided a performance update on the CUNY Investment Pool. Following the discussion, the committee approved that State Street Global Advisors shall be the sole investment manager for the City University of New York’s domestic equity mandate. Mr. Chairman, this concludes my report.
Thank you very much. I will turn next to the Committee on Faculty, Staff, and Administration. May I call on trustee Valerie Beal?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will now present for the Board’s approval the matters that the Board Committee of Faculty, Staff, and Administration considered at our meeting of February 3rd. Item 4A, continuation of military leave and employer-paid health and welfare benefits coverage for university employees recalled from the reserves to active military service. Each year since 2001, in response to the events of 9/11, the university has extended military leave and health and welfare benefits coverage to university employees who are recalled from the reserve to active military duty related to the war on terrorism. This resolution authorizes the continuation of leave and benefit for those employees through December 31, 2014. Mr. Chair, I present item 4A for the Board’s approval.
Thank you very much. May I have a second?
Second.
Is there any—are there any questions for the committee on item 4A? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions? 4A is adopted.
Item 4B authorizes the incorporation of the CUNY Graduate School of Journalism Foundation, Inc., and consents to the use of CUNY Graduate School of Journalism as part of the foundation’s name. The foundation is being formed to support and advance the educational and research activities of the School of Journalism by raising funds. The Board Committee on Faculty, Staff, and Administration has reviewed this matter and is pleased to recommend its approval. and is pleased to recommend its approval.
I'm happy to second that. Are there questions on the Journalism Foundation Board? Not all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions?
Items 4C through 4I are naming opportunities at Baruch College and Queens Borough Community College, which I will present as a group. I would like to thank those, these naming, I would like to announce that these namings reflect monetary gifts totaling more than $5 million. The Board Committee on Faculty, Staff, and Administration has reviewed these matters and is pleased to recommend their approval. Mr. Chair, I present items 4C through 4I for the board's consideration.
Thank you very much. I'd like to second that. Are there questions for the committee on any of these naming opportunities? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions? All those items are adopted.
Thank you. Finally, Vice Chancellor Waters provided the committee with a preliminary report on the university's hiring of full-time faculty and staff as of the fall 2013 semester, which I would like to share with the board. Between 2012 and 2013, the institutional staff, the instructional staff increased by 603 people. Faculty increased by 219 individuals, rising from 7,314 to 7,533 in 2013. ECP appointments increased by 23, and HEO appointments increased by 351. Federally protected minorities increased by 370 in the instructional staff, with representation going from 40.8 percent to 41.8 percent. Among the faculty, members of federally protected minorities grew by 101, with their percentage rising from 32.6 percent to 32.9 percent. In the executive ranks, total minorities grew by 17 percent, increasing their percentage representation from 34.5 percent to 36.3 percent. And in the HEO ranks, total minorities grew by 248, raising their percentage representation from 57.3 percent to 50, from 56.1 percent to 57.3 percent. Women increased their percentage representation in all instructional staff categories. In the instructional staff as a whole, women now hold 53.9 percent of the positions. Among full-time faculty, women are 48.5 percent, up from 48.3 percent last year, and in the executive ranks, women are now 46.3 percent of that category. These statistics are something that the university can be very proud of. Vice Chancellor Waters' office is doing additional analysis of this information and will publish the final report in its entirety in the near future. Mr. Chair, that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. I recall for members of the board that when I joined this board, there were about 4,500 full-time faculty at the university, so that, that number has been increased to 7,500, and that represents a remarkable achievement, again, by the chancellor and the presidents and deans of the various campuses.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to also commend Vice Chancellor Waters and all of the presidents and staff for the progress that they're making in terms of a lot of the issues there with affirmative action and diversity. That doesn't come easily. It only comes because of a focus and commitment, and so I just want to, to thank you and your staff. I know that there are goals that have been set, efforts that have been put in place, and initiatives, so I just want to commend you for that work.
Thank you very much. We'll turn next to the Committee on Academic Policy, Program, and Research. I'd like to call on, on trustee Wellington Chen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At its February 3rd, 2014 meeting, the committee approved the following policy matters. Calendar number 5A, Baruch College, Bachelor of Arts in Communication Studies. This degree program is part of the strategic plan of Baruch College to make the Weisman School of Arts and Sciences a destination liberal arts college. The program will prepare its graduates for careers in human resources, public relations, and advertising. Calendar number 5B, School of Professional Studies of the Graduate School and University Center, Bachelor of Arts in Human Relations. The program will provide students with an understanding of human behavior in a workplace environment through mastery of topics including conflict resolution, business communications, adult learning theory, and leadership. Graduates of the program will be prepared for entry-level positions in such areas as human resources and customer service. Calendar number, item 5C, Borough Manhattan Community College, Associate of Science in Community Health Education. Graduates will be prepared to continue their studies in community health at a senior college and for entry-level employment in the field. Positions for which graduates will be, will be immediately suitable include Medicaid Service Coordinator, HIV Prevention Specialist, and Youth Development Coordinator. Calendar number, item 5D, New York City College of Technology, Bachelor of Science in Professional and Technical Writing. This program will provide students with a content specialty such as technology, science, or business, as well as the skills to communicate that information to a lay audience through language and images in both print and digital platforms. Graduates will be prepared for employment in a broad range of professional areas, including business, government, technology, health professions, and grant writing. Calendar number 5E, College of Staten Island, Establishment of a School of Health Sciences. This action is consistent with strategic plans of the university, college, and the two founding departments, nursing and physical therapy, and reflects a national trend among such disciplines. The school will be home to the only doctoral programs at CSI, the Doctor of Physical Therapy, and the Doctor of Nursing Practice, and as such, will be the focus of fundraising activities to generate scholarship money for the benefit of undergraduate and graduate students in the health sciences. Calendar number 5F, Resolution to Award Honorary Degree at City College of New York's Commencement Ceremony. City College wishes to award an honorary Doctor of Fine Arts to Ms. Lilius White, a Tony Award-winning musical theater actress, and honorary Doctor of Humane Letters to Doctor, to Mr. Mill, Miller Draxler, the chairman and CEO of J. Crew Group, and an honorary Doctor of Science to Henry Parra, yeah, class of 71 and 73, and an engineer of bridge mechanics. Item number 5A through 5F were approved by the committee, and I recommend the approval by the board, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I'd like to second that motion. Are there questions for the committee on any of these items in item 5? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions? Are those items carry?
Information item. Dr. Wrigley told the committee that it was her pleasure to be at her first service to the CAPRA Committee. That concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. We'll turn next to the Committee on Student Affairs and Special Programs. May I call on trustee Carol Robles-Romond?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Committee on Student Affairs and Special Programs has one item for the board's approval. The committee met on February 3rd and approved calendar item 6A. Calendar item 6A, Baruch College, amended auxiliary enterprise board bylaws. Be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York approves the amended bylaws of the Bernard and Baruch College Auxiliary Enterprises Corporation, and an explanation for the recommended amendment is included in the calendar. At this point, Mr. Chairman, we will ask for a vote on item 6A.
All right, I'll second that motion. Are there questions for the committee on 6A? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions? 6A carries.
There is one information item, Mr. Chairman. I would like to share with the board, we would like to thank former chairperson Kathleen Pacelli for her dedication to this Committee on Student Affairs and Special Programs, as well as her recent efforts to establish a series of financial literacy videos, supporting students who are making critical financial decisions. These videos are now available on CUNY Media YouTube website and the Central Office of Student Affairs website. These videos will prove to be a tremendous resource and guide on financial decision-making for all of our students. Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. We'll turn next to the Committee on Facilities Planning and Management. May I call on trustee Frida Foster?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The following resolution came in too late for prior review at the Board of Trustees Committee on Facilities Planning and Management meeting scheduled for February 3rd. Therefore, it's being brought before the Board of Trustees for consideration tonight. The CUNY School of Public Health lease agreement is to authorize the General Counsel to execute a new 15-year lease at 55 West 125th Street on behalf of the CUNY School of Public Health. The new lease site, which is convenient to public transportation, will house the CUNY School of Public Health. The landlord will construct the space, including a newly constructed classroom and offspace, office space to the university's specifications. The landlord will contribute up to $780,000 to the work cost. Any construction cost over this amount will be reimbursed to the university as additional rent. The landlord will provide cleaning services and maintenance to the building's mechanical, electrical, and plumbing systems. CUNY will pay the cost of electricity and reimburse the landlord for proportional increases in applicable real estate taxes. The terms of the proposed lease is 15 years to start upon completion of the landlord's work, 26,000 rentable square feet on part of the seventh floor and the entire eighth floor. The annual base rent for the first five-year period is $981,000, well, $981,500,000 per annum. Second five-year period is $1,104,220 per annum, and the third five-year period is $1,242,280 per annum. I hereby request your approval of this calendar item.
I'll second the motion. Are there any questions on the lease agreement? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions? That item 7A is adopted.
Thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much. That concludes the, the business of this public meeting. Thank you all for attending, and we're adjourned.